At this time, they are not affiliated with others. So if you will, please stand while Ryan leads us in our campaign.
Good evening. Thanks for having me as your guest. Let's bow our heads. Thank you, God, that we could be here tonight. Thank you for it. A safe place to gather and do business. I want to ask for your blessing on this meeting, and not only on this meeting, but on the city as well. I pray for the new residents of Van Alstine, that they would find this a welcoming and safe environment. I pray for the first responders, that you would bless them with safety and wisdom as they've got to make split-second decisions. Would you let your hand of protection rest over them? I pray for general safety on the streets and in the schools of Van Alstine. I pray for your blessing over the teachers, that as they work to craft productive citizens, that they would also be raising young men and women with morals. I pray for the public servants that are gathered here tonight, that you would bless them with wisdom and insight to lead these people well and to serve them well, because we know that they're here as public servants, not for their own good, but for the benefit of this city. We pray for, most of all, for the families, recognizing that families are the fabric of society. We pray that families in this city would thrive. We pray that they would be healthy and whole and find support in the local structures where it's needed. I pray for the local churches, that you would bless them and help them to be healthy and whole and grounded on the Word of God. I pray for revival in this town. I pray that your Holy Spirit would rest over this community and that people would come back to the Bible. And I pray for your presence, because your Word promises that your presence is to us our good. And I ask all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing. Thank you. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be presented by William Cargill. He is the chaplain of the American Legion. So if you will, please lead us in the two pledges.
With honor and reply, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
And now the text is what?
With my honor and protection, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one nation, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Do we have any citizens' communications tonight? Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a communication from Kef Witmeyer. Kef is our county commissioner, and there he is.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Cargill.
Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity today. Grayson County Commissioners' Court approved a resolution in support of constitutional Proposition 1. It's no secret that the state roads are falling into significant disrepair. The funding source for state highways has been simply from the fuel taxes and from vehicle registration fees. Over the last twenty, twenty, thirty years, vehicle efficiencies have improved, which means that the tax revenues per mile have been decreased. All the while, we have an influx of more and more people creating more damage, more load on the infrastructure. There's not a good way out of this. Over the last thirteen years, the state of Texas has borrowed $23 billion to fund transportation projects. That means we are going out and paying interest on money rather than making hard decisions in how we are funding state roads. Proposition 1 focuses on the current severance tax, which is the tax that the state charges to oil and gas production companies. That tax, the first 25 percent of the severance tax goes directly to education. The next $1.2 billion goes to the State General Fund. Everything that's left over at this point goes to the Economic Stabilization Fund, otherwise known as the rainy day fund. As of August of this year, that rainy day fund is up to $8.4 billion, and it earns about 0.2 percent interest. So we are paying exorbitant rates on the interest when we borrow money to fund state highways, and yet we have money in the bank that's making next to nothing. Proposition 1 will create a system that is not going to take away anything that's currently in the rainy day fund. Fifty percent of future revenue that would have gone to that fund will be directed to public road projects, not including toll roads. This is, uh, this is one of those that it seems like it's a no-brainer. I know a lot of people who say, "I vote to no to all constitutional amendments," my father being one of those. I would encourage folks like that to please go out on November 4th and vote yes to this. This will provide $1.7 million a year to state highway projects other than toll roads without raising any new taxes. So I would urge the council members and all the citizens of Van Alstine to please do support that. I'd also like to make just a personal comment clarifying any misinterpretation or misperception to things that I may have said regarding railroad closures. Back in May, when all that started coming up, I'll go as fast as I can, Mr. Baker approached me about what we could do to help out there. I got in contact with Tex Dutton, with Larry Phillips, and we tried to do everything we could. It was quickly brought to our attention that we really didn't have a say in the matter, that the federal government controls everything, regulations regarding railroads, and anything we did would be trumped by federal regulations. So nobody wanted their things closed, me certainly, but I don't think anyone neglected to do the thing there. Thank you.
Thank you. It's time, um, the, we only have the one citizen's request, so the next item on the agenda. We have no public hearings, so it'll be number six. Approval of the minutes from September the ninth, 2014, regular meeting, and September the 22nd, 2014, special cause meeting. Are there any corrections or comments regarding this? Councilman Plight?
No.
Councilman Moore?
Uh.
Councilman Jessica.
Councilwoman Keller.
And Councilwoman Cooper.
None.
Okay. There are no corrections, so at this time, is there a motion regarding these two minutes?
I have a motion to approve the last one.
Well, you do it second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Jessica. Any further comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Number seven, presentation of recognition of Charles Milner for his years of service. This item will be postponed until the end of the agenda, as Mr., uh, Officer Milner has been caught, is out on call, so we will bring this up later if he's able to get back in time. The next item is item eight, here presentation from Dr. John Spees, superintendent of the Van Alstine Independent School District regarding the November the 4th, 2014 bond election. Dr. Spees.
Thank you, Mayor and the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Debbie Nance, one of our board members, is here also. I just wanted to take a few minutes to, uh, I've been on the speaking circuit for about six weeks now, trying to get the word out about the bond and make sure everybody can have an informed vote. We have some projects coming up that, uh, the two main categories that we're trying to cover is growth and safety. And at the elementary school, we grew by 12 percent this year, and we are flat out of space. Uh, we, we added two teachers this summer, and we are about to have to add a third grade teacher, and there's no place to put him. So at the elementary school, we're proposing to add six classrooms. This is a stopgap measure. It will give us 20 percent growth. Uh, if you're a mathematician, if we grew 12 percent this year, and that'll give us 20 percent, that's not going to give us too much longer until we have to have a second elementary school, but it's a stopgap measure. Two other projects at the elementary school that is included for safety is the new wing will also be a tornado shelter. And I think we will be the first school in the area to have tornado shelters in our schools, and I'm very, very proud of that. And we, a couple of years ago, we had one come very, very close to our borders, and it was a scary situation, so we'll have that. Another safety issue is currently, our elementary school is our only building we have that doesn't have a fire sprinkler system in it, and the bond calls for a sprinkler in the entire building for the safety of our students and staff. At the high school, we grew 10 percent this year, and we have three projects as part of the high school bond. The first one is that at the front of the building, if you've ever been through our high school, it's very confusing to figure out which doors to go in. There's two main entrances. We're going to seal those off and have one entrance in the middle of the building. We're going to bring the offices up to the front of the building so that we have secure entrances and people funnel through the office when they, they enter our high school. We have secure entrances at our other two campuses. We have a buzzing system at the high school, but then they go into the hallway when you buzz them in, so this will take care of that situation. About two-thirds of catastrophic things that happen in school districts happen at the high school campus, and so we're excited to get that project done. The second thing is we are going to add a wing on the north side of the high school. It will have eight classrooms total between all the renovations. We'll have eight additional classrooms. One of them will be a computer, or, excuse me, a chemistry lab. Currently, we have three labs for science in our building, but they're all electric, or the entire building's electric. We're proposing to move propane over from our ag shop that's across a driveway that will add, uh, we can have propane in our chemistry lab. Another exciting project is that we currently have a culinary arts program, and, but they have home back equipment. And so we want to put commercial equipment in there that they can learn on, and the commercial equipment, it'll also have the propane attached to it. And it has a security entrance that probably in the future, one day a week, it'll be open as a restaurant for lunch, which I think is a, a kind of a cool thing to have. And it'll funnel into the college's culinary arts program. The third project at the high school is our cafeteria. Currently, our cafeteria, we have three lunch periods. We plan on adding, in the next few years, about 300 more kids to the high school, and to add 300 more kids, we're going to have to start lunch after breakfast if we don't increase the size of our cafeteria. So we want to increase the size of our cafeteria 50 percent. We will also increase the width of the stage by about seven feet, and doing that will make it more accessible for our choir program, our band program, and also we're starting a theater program at the high school that we started this year, and it'll be set and designed with sound and lighting and stuff for that theater program. Now, probably what's on your mind now is, what's this going to cost me? It's a $6.9 million bond. Uh, we're going to spend $800,000 more than that, that we're taking out of our fund balance, which is like your savings account at home, and that will enable us to do all of these projects. It will be done though without raising taxes. And the way we're doing this without raising taxes, there's two things. Number one, we've been planning this for over three years, and we've refinanced three sets of bonds, which saves the district $200,000 a year, so we're using that $200,000. And the second thing is, as y'all are aware, Capeteller came in two years ago. Uh, the increase in the revenue that we received as a result of that has been put to the side, not put into our budget, and we're using that to offset the cost of this, of these bonds going up. So as y'all are probably aware, early voting starts next Monday, uh, and, excuse me, okay, uh, and it will be out of the college from seven to seven, uh, Monday through Saturday. Sunday, it will be open, uh, from 12 to 5. The following week, uh, Halloween week, it will be open that week. The last day of vote is Halloween, seven to seven that night. You can go trick-or-treating and then, uh, go, go vote that night. It's being handled by the county, so all the general election is happening during that time. Okay? We have to answer any questions the council might have.
Wouldn't you have, have any of these finished?
Thank you. The, these projects we need yesterday, uh, we, we're about 50 percent done with our, our drawings right now. We will be about 90 percent done when the bond passes. We will start construction in February. Everything except for the wing at the high school will be finished before school starts next year. And we've already got our construction manager on board, our architect on board, and we're all committed to that it will be done. The high school wing will probably, it could be September or October before it's done, but it will be done very quickly after that. So all of this will be spent, uh, within nine months.
When, when can the public start eating at the restaurant?
That, uh, we have not decided yet. We're not sure we're going to do it the first year there. Right now, they're catering to, on Fridays, they cater to our campuses and serve our teachers. They charge $5 for a wonderful lunch every Friday, which is a neat deal for our, our teachers that don't get to get out and go to restaurants and stuff. Within the next two, three years, we'll open it up to the general public.
Will it extend to teachers first?
Well, it's, it's been protected by our teachers, and we got two thumbs up from our teachers, the, the boo that they're being served.
That's excellent.
I, yes, ma'am.
Your flyer says the high school wing will also be designated for teenagers.
Yes. I'm sorry, I did not mention that. That wing will also be tornado rated. So two out of our three campuses, 100 percent of the kids on those campuses and future growth will be able to fit into those, those wings and, and will have tornado. We're looking for an option for the middle school, where it doesn't need any more additions, but we're, uh, looking at, uh, at how to serve that campus with tornado shelters as well. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
All right. Our girls are playing in volleyball tonight at one of their critical games, so we're going to go root them on, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item is item nine. Due discussion statement by Councilman Moore confirming his residency in the city limits in response to an inquiry by Mr. Pat Patterson questioning residency. This was, this inquiry was an agenda request that was submitted, it was submitted in four questions by Council, by a citizen, Pat Patterson. Does Councilman Russell Moore currently reside inside the city limits of Van Alstine? On what deck did he sell his house in Georgetown and leave his family outside the city? Since he's building a new house in the ETJ, why are his plans for residing inside the city of Van Alstine? And since he has not lived inside the city limits for an extended period, when does he plan to reside, reside from city council so a replacement who needs the legal qualifications to serve can be appointed to complete his term of office? We are going to clarify this, uh, these, this request tonight. I will start with a statement from Councilman Moore. I want to address some questions about my residency. We had our house on the market this past spring and got a contract and sold it in May. Soon as we got a contract on our house, we searched for a house in Van Alstine and secured a house off of Rigsby. It was only supposed to take a couple of weeks for this house to be ready for us to move in, but instead, it took a couple of months. We are currently living inside the city limits on Rigsby and plan to be there throughout my term as city councilman. I hope this clears up any confusion about my residency or rumors. Thank you. I also wish to read a point of law tonight regarding temporary, uh, regarding residency. In section 1.015, point, item A, in this code, residency means domicile, that is one town and fixed place of habitation to which one intends to return after any temporary absence. Now, that is from the Texas Election Code 1.015A. Also, the election code also has other provisions that likely control this issue that we're discussing now. A person does not lose residency by leaving his home to go to another place for temporary purposes only, nor does a person acquire residency in a place to which he comes for temporary purposes only and without the intention, intention of making this place his own, which Mr. Moore has stated. There was a temporary move. The intent of a person is crucial to a proper determination of residency, and every person is strongly presumed to have the right and privilege of fixing his residency according to his own desire. Whether a person is a resident depends on the circumstances surrounding the person involved and largely depends on the present intention of the individual. Intentions and presents are important evidentiary factors, and a temporary move from one place to another will neither create a new resident nor lose an old one. In the state, uh, the Texas Civil approved in 1934, the code, the court found that the mayor-elect was a resident of the city, to which he was elected for office despite the fact that his wife and children lived elsewhere as events occurred on stage. The court found that because his primary business was within the city limits and he resided in city limits during the week and only traveled out of town on the weekends, his intent was to remain a resident of the city in which he worked. Tonight, the statement from Councilman Moore, I believe, proves that he is indeed legally as a resident and a councilman, and we thank you very much for your statement. The next item on the agenda is number 10. Consider and take any action necessary regarding appointments to place three and four of the Parks and Recreation Board. This item is the Parks and Recreation Board met in an open meeting on September the 25th to review and consider appointments recommended to city council. The board, the Parks Board voted unanimously to recommend Melissa Arnold and Paul Nobles to place three and four. You have been given, uh, a copy of the minutes. You have also been given a copy of the application for volunteer boards. Do you have any questions pertaining to this Councilman Plight?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay.
Uh, quite a, uh, who, who do we have here from the board?
We have, uh, the, the Parks Board. Would you please come, uh, oh, did you want to ask?
No, I, I just wanted to know whether we had.
We have three here from the Parks Board.
Uh, originally, you had asked us to increase the Park Board from six, I mean, from five to seven, and we did that quite a ways back, I think it was, and we're still not, we're only filling three and four. That didn't sound like we needed to increase the Park Board, you know, that many, since we have, and, and I think, just a second. At the same time, when we were attempting to do that, I think you had five people that had applied to be on the Parks Board. And now you're coming to us with only two people to be put in place three and place four. Why is there not some of those others being put in place six and seven?
Well, originally, we had two of them that stepped down previously, so the two that we were going to bring aboard would put us to seven, but we had those two that resigned. And the other issue we have, you have to keep a certain amount of numbers that are within the city limit and certain without the city limit. So some of the ones that we had were outside the city limits, and those spots weren't for.
So do you have presently four that are inside the city limits?
We have three right now that are on. Uh, the two here that are in, that will give us, if I'm not mistaken, three inside the city limits, two outside, because the majority has to be inside the city limits. And then we have two other ones that we're talking to right now that were on our application, trying to get them into our next meeting or interview.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Moore?
No questions.
Councilman Jessica?
Uh, no questions, but I would like to say, uh, this is all the Paul Nobles of the working in different organizations here in the city. I think that's enough.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jessica?
I had a similar question, it's one of the four seats, but you've answered that, and I, I need opportunity to choose another one.
Councilman.
I have no questions.
Thank you very much. If there is no further discussion at this time, is there a motion?
We approve Melissa Arnold requesting Paul Nobles to be scheduled on the Parks and Recreation Board.
We have a motion by Councilman Futter, seconded by Councilwoman Keller. Is there any further discussion?
I have one question. What do they, what are their terms? How many years?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's one. I'll double-check that to make sure.
I'll double my one, okay.
Yeah, I believe it's one year.
One year each. Thank you. Any further questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the two nominees, Melissa Arnold and Paul Nobles. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda is consider and take any action necessary regarding a request and recommendation by the Parks and Recreation Board to demolish the old football field stadium located at 158 Gray's.
Trail.
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 Nine thousand dollars. Find out a print out there.
Here's a print.
Yeah, I can get to you. Thank you. Gray's Trail. I have here some of the, the minutes that was in our packet for those of you who are in the audience. A discussion about the demolition of the press box and remaining cement stands was introduced by Gary Evans. The press box will be tilted backwards and allowed to fall, and then the remains will be picked up and hauled off. Republic Services will be putting in a roll-off dumpster to contain the debris. Gary Evans made a motion, seconded by Stacy Brown, to have the removal of the old park press box and remaining stands put on the October agenda, and this was approved by all of the Parks Board members that were present. Do you have any questions? And we will start with Councilman Futter at this time. Councilwoman Keller?
Hi, I'm Stacy Brown.
Oh, sorry.
Further, I'm.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Jessica?
Just clarification. It's because it's, uh, ideas more.
Yes, sir. The flooring and stuff is paving in, it's got holes in it, the water is pouring in.
Councilman Moore?
No questions.
Uh, who are we expecting to have paid for?
The city will be paying for the dumpster itself. Everything else is being donated by individuals in the city that are volunteers to come out and demolish it.
Okay. On the cement, is that a part of it?
The cement, we are going to put an ad in Craigslist, in what was in the newspaper, for any farmers that want that debris to fill in some low spots if they have, that they can come and get, trying to reduce any cost that we have and getting that removed and taken out.
Okay, do we have any budget for dividing this or?
Within the public sector, we can get one.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, at this time, is there a motion?
Any motion, we approve the request to demolish the vault station or vault.
Okay. Um, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Plight. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Number 12. Consider and take any action necessary regarding authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution declaring the Van Alstine leader the newspaper of record was a physical year 2015. You even have the editor. Uh, is there any questions regarding this? It has served our, uh, newspaper of record from 2013, 2014. It is our local paper. And it's required that each year, a type A municipality must designate its official newspaper by resolution or ordinance. Are there any questions regarding this? Councilman Moore? Councilman Plight?
No.
Councilman Jessica?
No.
Councilman? Councilwoman Kelly? Councilman P. There being no questions, is there a motion in regard to this?
I'll make a motion, probably that. We take any action necessary if we would authorize a resolution declaring the Valoski leader the newspaper of record for fiscal year 2015.
Thank you. Is there a second? And a second by Councilman Cooper. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Number 13. Consider and take any action necessary regarding authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to the interlocal agreement of Grayson County Multi Jurisdiction Emergency Notification System. This is, what this is, is an amendment. It is a contract to allow for unlimited use to expand the system for non-emergency notifications in the city of Valoski. The additional cost for the FY15 will be $8,000, and for FY15, Grayson County will cover this additional cost. The court has approved an amendment to our local agreement, and they approved it on October the 1st, 2009, was our original agreement. In this amendment, Grayson County will be responsible for payment of the upgrade fee to the contract for FY15 in the amount of $8,000. This is for the county. They will take the cost, it will not be to the city. Another thing that they will need from us is not only this, an amendment agreement, but they will need us to designate a locally the keeper of your user's credentials. And I think that that should be the city manager and our communications center. Another thing is designate a time each year to refresh training and ensure someone knows how to use the system, particularly if you are an infrequent user. And my suggestion is January R., whenever the next designated date of training is, whichever comes first. I have not been notified when this training is available, but it is available through the county, and we will need it. So whenever it is, as soon as it is available. Are there any questions regarding this? Councilman Cooper? Councilwoman Kelly?
No, just.
Councilman Jessup? Councilman Miller? Okay, Bailey. Councilman Plake?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, okay, so this is a system that allows you to do things architecturally related to, you know, like fires or.
Yes, like if we had an amber alert, it would take in other things other than emergency things. You would be alerted for, I think.
Okay, could it be things like if you wanted to tell everybody to fall to roll?
No, but if your water was going off, it would be. But it's not far.
So non-emergency does not mean non-emergency?
I don't really know that fall to roll would fall under this category. I do know that if, say, a water line burst and you were going to be without water for a day or two days. Right now, that is not on the red alert. The only thing that's on it right now is really just the weather. So in the training, we would learn all the things that would be included.
So are we presently paying $1,400 in the cost for the year?
We're in the worst for this year.
That's what we pay.
Present we're at by this year. There's the grant right now.
Okay, I thought it did.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. At this, is there a motion at this time?
Amendment.
Yeah, amendment.
Providing for you non-emergency notifications.
Is there a second? We have a second, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion regarding this specific item? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Sorry. Do we need any included motion?
No, we're going to do a separate motion for that.
Oh, for operating?
No. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Now, what do we, if you'll notice in your packet, we have approved that, so therefore, since it has been approved, we will need to designate locally the keeper of the user credentials and who will be the local expert or experts, which can be more than one, on use of the system and be prepared to provide that information to us. And I had recommended the city manager and the communications center. Is there any discussion on this?
I would like to have the public vote for that.
Chief of Communications. Chief, what do you think about Chief of Communications?
Chief Barnes?
Well, I mean, I think they're asking for a person to be designated. I don't know that it's the center. I think it would be because, as we've used this before, Sarah Summers was the keeper of the code red. So we would contact her, she would send the message out. My understanding is that we're going to be sending the information out. So it's going to be, my thinking it needs to be a person, not a, yes, not the center itself, because we have protocols, nothing gets sent out unless it's approved.
Okay. And what would your recommendation be?
Well, everything has to, for communication, has to go through me as far as sending anything out, so. I guess I was wrong.
I do, by opposition.
Chief of Police, okay.
That'd be primary. And if you're out, Chief Smith. Right?
Okay.
That'd be good.
First would be Chief Barnes.
Chief of Police, by opposition.
And second would be Chief Fire. The Fire Chief. Since we have to put a person, an individual, those are the two. Also, included in that is designate a time each year to refresh training and ensure someone that knows how to use the system. And my recommendation is whenever the next training is available, as soon as the next training is available. Because I do not know.
Yes, I believe it says that it has to be done by January 2014, so.
Well, I'm sure that they will offer it.
Yeah.
Okay. So. Chief Barnes, do you know when that training will be available?
No, I'm sure Sarah will, Sarah, it'll be a county-wide, will be notified. I'm not sure if that's said or not.
We could just say when the next training is, that's available. Okay, are there any further questions from Council? Councilman Cooper? Councilwoman Kelly?
Yes, I'm wondering, should we say specifically Chief of Police, Fire Chief versus the names of those individuals? So that if the individuals and the positions change, we are not filing this.
Well. If he said we couldn't leave their communities, the communication, that it had to be an individual, is that correct? Not a position, but an individual?
Well, you could say designate, but, you know, if I'm not a Chief Smith, I mean, we're going to have someone in a designate position to create that communication out. So I think it should be titled on this.
It's titled, it's.
Titled, not title. First is Chief of Police, second, Fire Chief. Councilman Jessup, you have any questions? Councilman Moore? Councilman Plake?
No.
There are no other questions. Is there a motion at this time?
That way you are authorized, the mayor, to sign an amendment. Hold the movement for a minute.
Yeah, we want to designate the local keeper, who will be the expert on the system. Okay. The Chief of Police is first and Fire Chief is second. Is that also that they attend the next day of training? Is there a second to this motion? We have a second to the motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is department reports. I'm not sure if we want Jennifer's report or the library report. Would you like to give that and give us an update on Jennifer?
I can't give an update on Jennifer, but I'd be happy to give the director's report for the library.
Thank you very much. Okay, then.
These statistics represent the month of September. Our door count was at 3,500. Thirty-seven people passed through our doors in the month of September. Circulation was 2,640. Final figure for Friends of the Library Book Sale was $1,568.15, which is a little bit lower than it was in years past. I had 40 new patrons sign up. We will be partnering in the upcoming months. The Friends of the Library and the library will be partnering with Lone Star Foods for our new program. We get to pick four days in the upcoming year. Anybody that goes to Burger King on that day and states that they're there to support the library will get 10% of their sales. We have two more computers in service at the library at no extra charge. And two weeks ago, I was, had the privilege and honor of attending a volunteer appreciation dinner at the Crisis Center, and we were surprised by being chosen for an award for volunteer, outstanding service for a volunteer for the previous year. Except to Team Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Barnes?
We had National Night Out last week, which turned out well. I want to thank everybody that came out and supported us and all the sponsors and look at every year, make it a lot more successful than it was this year. And that's all I've got.
Smith?
I just want to cut to now, we've been very busy lately, including policies and features set up in the state. So the city, in all the terms and details.
Thank you. City managers report?
Mayor and Council, Steve's out. Steve's out, but he, earlier this week, we had shut down the syrup plant. The airline that currently is serviced by the air pumps that are to be replaced by the mechanical pumps. We're taking loads out of the equipment. We're in the process of engineering. The engineering has been done, but we're in the process of getting all the equipment in place so that way it can all be put together and put into operation. Airline failed. It was something that took them a day and a half to fix. Syrup Lane is back up and running. We just contacted TCQ and found all the corporate paperwork to keep us in compliance. Fall to Roll has turned in the required documents. They'll be issued their notice received at the event. We also received a notice from TechDoc that 121, they approved our D-Dr route and that 121 could be closed for the event. And Engineering has hard at it with surveying to finalize the line going down County Line and Carter Road. And Collin County Commissioner's Court yesterday agreed to fund their portion of Carter Road extension from County Line Road northward to extend Carter Road through. So that's what we have going on. And Golden Chick's waiting on a water meter and a tap and going to shave some dirt and looking forward on their project.
I saw their logo there. One of the secretaries asked me if that was going to be it. That is it. You never know. I did skip someone, so before we go to mayor and have some closing comments, I want to make you aware that we have an air attorney was unable, Judy Ford was unable to be here tonight, but we do have a representative from Mr. Rockefeller and Fort, and he has brought us a brochure. Would you like to tell us about this?
I'll just briefly.
Introduce yourself and tell us.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Zach Knoblen. I'm an associate attorney with Mr. Rockefeller and Fort. Before the mayor and the council members, we have just a brochure. We will be conducting an open government training for officials, public officials, on November 7th, and we strongly encourage you guys to come out. And if you guys are interested in learning a little bit more about the Open Meetings Act and Public Information Act, we will be having trainings. The Grayson County DA himself will also be there to kind of talk about the criminal penalties associated with those acts. Believe it or not, there are criminal penalties associated with the Open Meetings and Public Information Act. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Well, also, if you can sign in and answer this. Councilman Plake, do you have any comments you would like to make? Councilman Moore? Councilman Jessup?
Just to remind everybody, we've already talked about Fall to Roll, it's a big deal, and to be a part of it. Also want to, there's somebody, well, you can assure, and Paul. From Chief Man Austin, we're going to be having a membership meeting next Monday at 6:00. About here, so come see this out.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kelly?
Yes, I'd like to say that the parade associated with Fall to Roll will be at 11:30. Just line up down there along Preston and watch the parade. Fall to Roll, the official start.
Yes. Last announcement will be the Town Hall meeting here in this building. It will begin at 6:30. It will be on Tuesday, there's going to be on the ballot.
The money's the time, ma'am.
Madam Mayor? Can I ask if the city council, if one of the participants is playing? Have they decided whether they're all or not?
I don't know. We could do it.
I will do it if everybody else does.
I'll do it.
Okay.
That's it.
I guess that's good. That's pretty good. How about you?
You can lead it.
If I don't have soccer games.
Okay, 10:28, what was the time?
I see 6:30.
6:30. 10:28, 6:30, Town Hall meeting. And where's the location? Community Center. And that is sponsored by? The Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. And my comments are, thank you very much for coming. We're glad that you're here and that you have an interest in your company. And we'll see you again next time. Thank you. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
Sorry. Great Days of Service came in and painted the restrooms this past weekend, as well as if anybody's been into the senior center, they painted Joyce's set of strawberry wine. It's the reddish color. And the other color is tan. But Great Days of Service did a great job in the senior centers that I've seen, and they did a good job in our bathrooms. So thank you to anybody that had anything to do with Great Days of Service.
Is there a motion that we adjourn at this time? Motion by Billy Plake. Is there a second? Second by Russell Moore. All those in favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous, we are adjourned at this time. We are, forget the time, let's cut off. We are adjourned at 7:19. Thank you very much. The Fire Chief. Since we have to put a person, an individual, those are the two. Also, included in that is designate a time each year to refresh training and ensure someone that knows how to use the system. And my, my recommendation is whenever the next training is available, as soon as the next training is available, because I do not know.
Yes, I believe it says that it has to be done by January 2015, so.
Well, I'm sure that they will offer it, you know. So. Kind of real community for a simmer. Chief Barnes, do you know when that training will be available?
No, I'm sure Sarah will, Sarah, it'll be a county-wide, will be notified. I'm not sure if that's set or not.
We could just say when the next training is, next available. Okay, are there any further questions from Council, Councilman Cooper? Councilwoman Kelly?
Yes, I'm wondering, should we say specifically Chief of Police, Fire Chief versus the names of those individuals, so that if individuals and the positions change, we don't have to file against us?
Well, if he said, we couldn't do that communities, the communication, that it had to be an individual, is that correct? Not a position, but an individual?
Well, you could say designate, but, you know, if I, if I'm not a Chief Smith, I mean, we're going to have someone in a designate position to, to create that communication out, so I think it should be titled on this.
It's titled, it's titled.
Title, not title, I don't know. First is Chief of Police, second, Fire Chief. Position. Okay. Councilman Jaskin, you have any questions? Councilman Moore? Councilman Plight? No. There are no other questions. Is there a motion at this time?
I'll be, you know. That way you are authorized, the mayor to sign a, 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 before you can go in.
Yeah, we want to designate the, the local keeper, who will be the expert on the system. Okay. The Chief of Police is first, and Fire Chief is second. Is that also that they attend the next debate and training? Is there a second to this motion? We have a second to the motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is department reports. I'm not sure if we want Jennifer's report or the library report. Would you like to give, and then give us an update on Jennifer?
I can't give an update on Jennifer, but I'd be happy to give the director's report for the library.
Thank you very much. Go take that.
These statistics represent the month of September. Our door count was at 3,500. Thirty-seven people passed through our doors in the month of September. Circulation was 2,640. Final figure for Friends of the Library book sale was $1,568.15, which is a little bit